Left or six, we'll go on to get this meeting of Scott County Plant and Zoning Commission. Plant and Zoning Commission started and let's see. First thing on the agenda I guess would be the approval of the August invoices.
Charlie, you swear everybody in?
Oh, you want to swear everybody in first, or you want to do that later, Charlie?
Whenever you want me to.
We can do it right off the bat, that way we won't forget about it.
Everyone signed in to speak, please stand and raise your right hand, please.
If you're speaking on something, I mean, about what's going on in your area, you have to sign in?
Yes, ma'am. Why don't you do your whatever first while these two ladies are signing in?
Alright.
And then we'll get them all at once. Thank you, just in a moment then.
Now, we're going, do you want to go on to the approval of August invoices?
Yeah, while they're signing in, yes, sir.
Has anybody had a chance to look at the invoices? Motion by Mr. Caldwell to approve the invoices, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Stone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? We have approval of the August invoices. Still have more signing in? Alright. We'll move on to item B, the approval of the August 8th, 2019 minutes. Take a second and just review the minutes and I'll take a motion.
I make a motion?
Motion by Ms. Mizell to approve the August 8th minutes. Second by Mr. Caldwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Very well.
Motion passes. See how people signing in. Brings us to item C, the approval of the September agenda. Are there any changes?
Allegations, but there will be one postponement, I'll mention in a second.
Alright, you have a second? Alright, have a motion to approve the September agenda?
So move.
So move, Mr. Mifflin?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mizell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on and get this knocked out then.
I'm trying, Steve, I'm trying.
Items for postponement or withdrawal. So you have one, Joe?
Yeah, we do have one late item, it's hotel development on Ichamon Path. I asked the applicants to answer any questions, but they did ask for a postponement this afternoon.
Yeah, it's possible that the state will make some changes out there in the traffic flow that it would help, I think it would help everybody's, it'd help us all out.
Yes, Mr. Chairman for Director, my name is Jihad Halani, with Vision Engineering, 128 Eastern Road, Lexington, Kentucky. So, with your permission, we'd like to postpone 30 days till October public meeting. We met with the neighbors, we, there was a meeting between the state and the city that we were involved in, so there were some suggestions about improvement. Some of them is getting implemented, and maybe it's getting implemented, I'm not sure if they're going to get implemented or not, so we thought we can push it 30 days and we'll come back in October. And also, we are completing our traffic study, so it's not 100% complete, and we want to share it with the neighbor, as well as with the staff and the transportation cabinet, so everybody's aware of how does it look like and what we did and our assumptions, so.
I think that'd be to everybody's liking, just to have our ducks in a row and to make sure that, especially the people there and the neighbors in that area are satisfied with what's going on in the traffic flow.
I agree.
So are the, is the homeowner association neighbors in that area, is the traffic the only objection they have?
There was some concern, sir, about the location of one entrance, it's very close to a residence, so we pushed it approximately 100 feet. And then, there was a request to relocate the dumpster from also next to residential house, to put it next to Golden Corral previous location, so we did that. And also, the neighbor requested to add privacy fence, so we are proposing eight feet tall privacy fence between us and them, with landscaping, and there was some comments also from the staff about interior landscaping and some other things that have been addressed, but basically, it was majority, I would say over 95%, it's only about the traffic. Yeah, which is something, we can do so much on it, so it's a little beyond our capability what we can do, especially hotels, usually, you know, it's not like they have, not like school or people, they have to be at certain time, at 8 o'clock or 5, they leave. Their peak AM or peak PM is kind of dispersed, it's like for the checkout, usually between 3 till 10, because I usually see something between 6 till 8, 8:30 usually this is where, but that's the advantage of the hotels, like you don't have, you don't hit it one point, it's kind of dispersed at certain time.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, you want to swear everybody in, you think we have more to run?
Well, we can get them later then, I guess.
Everyone who signed in to speak, if you could please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the statement you made tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you all.
Now, it brings us to item E, the consent agenda, is there anything we have eligible for consent?
We need a motion and a postponement.
Oh, do we need that?
Yeah. I make a motion?
Ms. Mizell makes a motion that we approve the postponement of?
I'll second that.
I've got a number.
ZMA?
Yep, PGP 2019-31. And we have a second by who? Oh, Mr. Stone?
Yep.
Mr. Stone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion passes, we postpone that to next month. That brings us to the consent agenda, and we have how many things eligible?
There's one thing eligible, it's FSP 2019-34, the Tina Romano property.
Alright. How many people are here tonight to hear the Tina Romano property application? At least one? You're here to support it, or to, just to hear what it's about? Are you here to, in favor of it, or you'd like to hear it? You'd like?
To get the information.
Information, yes.
Alright. In that case, we probably, I think we're better off to go on here that application as well. So we won't have anything on the consent agenda. Alright, so being that hotel development is postponed, I guess that brings up a new business, the estate of Ruth Ishmael, zone change. And this would be a public hearing, wouldn't it?
Alright, yes.
We'll open the public hearing. And I would go on state, this is a zone change request for property currently zoned A1 over to B2, and is located at 113 and 115 Eder Lane.
And just to clarify, if anybody's here for their hotel on Ichamon Path, it has been postponed till October. Alright, so this is a zone change request. For the estate of Ruth Ishmael. This is an A1 agricultural remnant on the south side of Georgetown, just north of Eder Lane. West of Lexington Road and south of the bypass, so this triangular parcel is currently being used by bypass rental, I think they have both parcels, so there's two parcels here. It's been used commercial for a number of years, since prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance, I believe, so it is lawfully, it's a lawfully non-conforming commercial business on an agricultural parcel. These are the two parcels right here. Together, they amount to about 3.24 acres. This is the zoning map, this has changed a little bit since I made this slide, I borrowed it from another presentation, but this white with the green kind of grass symbol is A1 property. The property on the other side of the road is now zoned commercial. This is a portion of the retirement community that was zoned commercial in the last six months. So, the majority of the property in this area is now zoned commercial, with the exception of these two parcels, and then there's another parcel here with the non-conforming commercial business, and then there's a non-conforming commercial mini storage warehouse on this other piece. So they're all being utilized for commercial uses essentially. When we look at a zone change, the first thing we look at, KRS has guidance on zone changes, zone map amendments, either, first thing we look at is, does it comply with the Conference of Plan Future Land Use Map? If it doesn't, we have to look at two other additional items that allow for zone changes, changes in character in the area, economic, physical, or is the property inappropriately zoned? This property is planned commercial on our future land use map, this is a shot of our future land use map. This is the triangular parcel here, so the intersection of 25 and the bypass is planned commercial on our future land use map, even those other parcels that are zoned to ag, eventually, hopefully those will be annexed and rezoned as well to come into conformance. Across the street, it's planned commercial, and this is Sepulveda and the old airport property there. So its own property is planned commercial on our future land use map, so it does conform with our Conference of Plan guidance for the area, so we don't necessarily have to look at those two additional items. So, we are recommending approval based on it being in compliance with the Conference of Plan. Rezoning and annexing the property will allow it to be redeveloped in conformance with our commercial standards. Right now, the property is on septic, redevelopment would have to be on public sewer. Annexation by the City of Georgetown would also be a condition, and that would bring it into the city, make the city limits uniform, bring in that tax revenue to the city. Within the city, receiving city services, so it should be in the city. So we are in support of the rezoning. We are recommending approval with these six conditions. One, that the, first being that they return to the Planting Commission for approval of a development plan or subdivision plot, if they redevelop, at the time of redevelopment of the property, they comply with their zoning and subdivision regulations. That they meet all our other stormwater regulations, et cetera. They be hooked up to public sewer and they be annexed in the City of Georgetown with any redevelopment of the property. And we added an additional recommendation, number four, that time of redevelopment and preliminary development plan approval, that they connect to Eder Lane with the sidewalk and make a pedestrian connection. So, to summarize, we are recommending approval of the zone change with these six conditions. You make a recommendation essentially with your finding, and then we'll take it to City Council, they'll make the final decision.
Thank you, Joe, and I apologize I was late. Any questions for Joe? Okay, so we'll hear from the applicant. We got Peggy Petty, Mrs. Petty? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peggy Petty, address is 206 Highland Avenue here in Georgetown. We don't have any plans for the property, we're just bringing, we want to rezone it and bring it into the city to sell it. We're trying to sell, settle my mother's estate, that's all we're doing.
Any questions for Mrs. Petty? No, okay, thank you, Mrs. Petty. Anybody here to speak either against or for this application? Please step up and again, state your name.
Make sure I'm me today.
My name is Rita Green, my address is 101 Dogwood Drive. I just had a couple of questions, this area, my house is right in front of that area, that's where I live. And I was just trying to figure out what is going to go on there behind that when it is rezoned? Is it going to benefit me, or is it going to hurt me with my property? Because the entrance now to the bypass goes right past my house, up to Eder Lane. They said they couldn't have an entrance any other way because it's too close to the intersection. So if they're putting offices, or a restaurant, or something, or a gas station there, is that going to hurt me or benefit me? And could, would they put a wall to separate my home from whatever they put there? Just had that question.
We'll answer that, we'll take everybody's questions first, if you have questions, then both the Joe and/or the applicant will answer. Anybody else here to speak against or for? Okay. Joe, do you want to answer the lady, Mrs. Green's maybe questions, what can and can't be allowed there?
They're asking for commercial, highway commercial, they could put a restaurant there. We're asking them, or we're requiring them to come back to the Planting Commission with the development plan, if and when they redevelop, I don't, right now, I think they're just going to leave it the same, I mean, we can operate. As far as buffering, when they bring a development plan, they'll have to put a buffer, a wall and landscaping between them and the residences, they'll go add an additional buffer, so that will help you. They'll have to do, meet our stormwater requirements, so they'll have to detain water on site, so that'll help the runoff. As far as access, I don't think they can get direct access to any of the made roads with that configuration, but they are adjoining a bit of property that was just zoned commercial here, and there is some room on the right of way, the state right of way, that they could put a driveway, potentially, connection between this commercial and then this commercial, so it's redeveloped, there's an access to the bypass over here, so they could potentially route, get access directly through the bypass, rather than having to come off this dangerous intersection and come back through that Eder Lane. So that would be helpful, yeah, if it was a rezone and redevelop. They couldn't do it now because they can't, now they can't tear down, they can't redevelop the property. They have to continue to use exactly as it is, or they can't do anything else with it, so they have to. Yeah, I'm not sure, but, yeah.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else have any questions of Joe, or the applicants, or does the commission have any questions?
Ms. Petty, have you talked with the folks that are running the rental center there? Do they, are they interested in buying it, do they plan on staying there?
Ms. Petty, would you mind coming up? We tried to tape it, so we want to make sure we get everybody on a microphone, thank you.
Nope, they haven't talked to us. We're on, they're on a month-to-month rental, and they haven't said anything to us. We've just heard through the grapevine that they purchased other property and that they're planning on doing something, but they've not said anything to us.
So, do you have plans to develop it, or just to sell it?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We're going to sell that puppy.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. If no further questions, probably entertain a motion.
I make a motion, yes?
You're gonna?
I make a motion to approve.
To approve, so I've got a motion by Mrs. Mizell.
I'll second it.
May I be to adopt staff recommendation in support of that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Yes, sir.
Steven, did you have a question?
No, I say I would second it, I think it's, I think it's good to bring, where this has been a non-compliant use of the land, zone day one, I think it's good to bring it, bring it up the code.
So I've got a second then by Mr. Smith, and because it's a zone change, we do need to roll call.
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the record, and I apologize, I think Mr. Smith told me everybody who swore in who spoke, or is speaking.
Yes.
And then for the record, Mr. Wiseman is absent, and Commissioner Moran is absent. So, this is a motion to approve and adopt, and we'll take a roll call. Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizell?
Yes.
And the chair goes yes as well, so it gets approved. Ms. Petty, if you want to step up to Mr. Perkins, he'll have you sign the appropriate documents, thank you. Next on the agenda is FSP 2019-34, Tina Romano property, final subdivision plat to subdivide five acres, a five acre lot from apparent tract of 53.84 acres, located north of Harbor Village Drive and west of Cincinnati Pike. Michaela?
I'm smart. Like you said, this is a final subdivision plat to create one five acre tract, on a parent tract of approximately 53 acres, leaving a remainder tract of approximately 48 acres. The property is zoned R3, which is our high density residential zoning district. The surrounding properties are zoned R1C, which is our single-family residential, A1, which is our agricultural zoning district, and B1, which is our neighborhood. Sorry, this, these maps aren't the easiest to see, but I just wanted to give you an idea of where the site is that we're looking at. So this is the whole property, all 53 acres of it, as you can see, the entire property is zoned R3. This is Cincinnati Pike here, this is Harbor Village Drive, Harbor Village. Where they're proposing to do the five acre tract will be approximately right here, just to give you a sense. And this is the plat, so just to orient you again, this is Cincinnati Pike here, this is the tract, this is the lake here. And so, with the proposal, they are, you know, proposing to meet all of our required regulations as far as lot size, setback requirements. They did receive a permit from KYTC in 2016 for that, the proposed entrance here. So they are proposing to do an access and utility easement to reach the proposed five acre tract. It's possible on the final, they might, they might have to adjust some of the utility easements just to ease the, or lessen the distance to be able to get the utilities to the site, but that's something that can be established on the final. But staff doesn't really have too much, yeah, they, like I said, they are meeting all of our regulations. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Michaela?
I am recommending approval with standard conditions on them.
Questions? Okay, thanks, Ms. Michaela. The applicant want to speak? Or who's here for the application? Somebody's got to be here for either Mrs. Romano or the engineer? Oh. State your name and address.
My name is Candace Whitehouse, I'm not, none of those people, but I'm here, I guess, representing the plat. I don't really have a lot to say unless people have questions.
Any questions? So you're not representing the owner or the engineering company, you're just here in favor of?
This is Mrs. Mifflin.
Right, and I know who she is.
Yeah, so the intention is to eventually, once this plat is subdivided officially, they are looking to donate it, and so we've done a lot of the work to help get it to this point.
Okay.
And Vision Engineering donated all of their time, so they're not here tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Candace Whitehouse? Thanks, Candace. Anybody here to speak in favor of or against, I guess? I think don't we have, I thought we had a couple Harbor Village people here. You know what, you're just here to listen? Okay. I knew the faces. Alright, well, with that being said, anybody have any other questions for either the applicant or Michaela? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept FSP-2019-34 and the recommendations of the staff for approval.
So I've got a motion by Mr. Mifflin?
My second.
The second by Mrs. Mizell. We can do an all in favor of, correct, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
So all in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, so it passes unanimously, thank you. Charlie, who would step, no one would step up?
No, I believe, well, the engineer, if they're here representing the applicant, otherwise, Mr. Romano would just have to come by the office and sign. Oh, so they're out of state tonight.
They could just come to Planting and Zoning, come in and sign, and then Charlie gets it signed as well, thank you. Next on the agenda is ZMA 2019-36, the Drake Zone Change. This is a zone change request for property currently zoned A1 to R2, located at 1140 East Main Street Extended, this is a public hearing.
Okay, this is another zone change on the south, south of the bypass, off East Main Extended in Georgetown. The property is 17.83 acres in size, this is the last piece of parcel before you get to the quarry on East Main Extended on the left. We do have a concept plan, which I'll go back to, I'll skip that for now. This is the property here, has a long frontage adjoining the interstate. There's one barn on the property. Can't remember if the house was torn down, or not, there was a house there. This property is zoned A1 and surrounded by R2 zoning, which is our medium-density residential. R2 allows single-family, but it also allows multifamily up to 12 units an acre. So the property, the school, is on, was zoned R2 a couple years ago, and then sold to the school afterwards, so obviously no residential occurred on that. The remainder on the south side, East Main Extended, is mostly zoned R2, and it's largely single-family, mansion estates, East Main Estates, Violet's Trace, Ridgefield Farms, or the subdivisions kind of combined in that area. So it is mainly zoned R2. Again, with the zone change, we have to look to, at our comprehensive plan, future land use map, to see what it says for the property. If it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, we don't really look much beyond that, unless there are extreme situations that would dictate that that comprehensive plan is not correct, which we just updated our comprehensive plan recently, so I would hope that's not the case. But this property on the future land use map is planned commercial, so all this, or, sorry, planned residential, so this orange is residential. There are a few undeveloped parcels mixed in in that area, but this is really the last residential parcel between Lemons Mill and the creek that's undeveloped. Well, you saw this, a plan on this property along the bypass a couple months ago, but this is the last one on East Main Extended. So all that area is zoned, or is planned residential on the future land use map, and this is the last one zoned A1 still. So the applicant is, is asking to, I'll go back to the concept plan, asking to rezone to medium-density residential and develop the property at some point. I don't think they have any specific plan at this point. They did submit a concept plan, because they're required, anytime you get a zone change, you're required to submit a concept plan if the property is vacant. They have shown an R2-type development with essentially apartment buildings, standalone apartment buildings surrounded by parking and driveways that meet the R2 density of 12 units an acre, but they're showing these buildings as, as larger than what's allowed in R2. So R2, although it allows 12 units an acre, it, it maxes out the number of units you can have in a building at six. So it's designed really as that interim. What Matt put in his staff report is missing middle, so it's that, that lower-intensity multifamily, smaller buildings, townhouses and things like that, not the large kind of garden or large multi-story apartments. So it limits the number of units to six an acre. So although they are showing on this concept plan larger buildings, we are not recommending approval of this concept plan at this time. That's why they're not asking for this to be a planned unit development, which would kind of lock in the concept plan. They're just asking for a standard R2 zoning. We think the R2 zoning is appropriate on this property since it's surrounded by R2 zoning and is planned for residential in our comprehensive plan, but not necessarily this plan. So although we are recommending approval, we aren't endorsing this plan per se. They are also showing there's two sinkholes on this property, a smaller one here, and then this large depressed area that takes up a lot of the parcel, and they did protect it on the school site, but the majority of this depressed area is on this, this property. So although we are recommending approval of the zone change, they will have to come back with a development plan or subdivision plot, depending on what they want to do with that property. And our ordinance, our environmentally sensitive lands ordinance doesn't allow residences in a sinkhole area or in an environmentally sensitive area. So we are stating in our plan that this area will need to be explored further, and the limits of the environmentally sensitive area will have to be set aside and protected, and you can't put any residential structures in it. They did do a traffic study. They looked at East Main Extended, and their traffic study showed that they didn't have, weren't having any major impact on the road. It was recently rebuilt and widened for the school. We are asking also that if approved, when they come back with their development plan or subdivision plot, that they do a new traffic study and update it based on the school traffic as well. So once the school gets in, in place for a while, and the traffic patterns get set, they, they study those and come back with an updated traffic study with the, when they come back to the board with preliminary approval. Other than that, we are recommending approval of the zone change because it is in conformance with their comprehensive plan with the, with six conditions, and I'll go through them quickly, that they return to the planning commission with their preliminary plans, preliminary development plan, or preliminary subdivision plot if they're going to split it up into single-family lots, that they comply with their zoning and subdivision regulations, that they do a detailed drainage study of the environmentally sensitive areas, and they submit that with their preliminary plan, that they update the traffic study with their preliminary submittal, and that they label with that drainage study that they label the sinkhole areas as unbuildable and keep the residences out of those areas, and that they annex the property into the city of Georgetown before development. This, this property also is an annexed, so it's within the Urban Service Ground, but not annexed yet.
Any questions for Joe?
Just one. There's a note on the, there's a note on the map for a potential access to a reserved-for- ventilation shaft for the rock quarry. Does anything need to be put in our conditions on that, or is that, I don't know if that, I think it's just a note on the?
With the zone change, I mean, we can...
Is that a definite thing?
It wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt to say identify that.
I don't know why they made a note of it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Mine's probably more of a statement. Charlie can reel me back in, in line if I step out of line. You know, we've got a zone change concept, concept plan, and it shows eight units and 12 units, and even a couple 16 units, yet based on our R2 density, the maximum units is six. Shouldn't we not maybe strike this concept plan out of the package? Because I don't want anybody, a couple of years from now, for this to slip through, and all of a sudden they build 16-unit apartment buildings there.
Well, you, you could certainly do it that way.
Or, or open recommendations.
My thinking was simply that, assuming it's approved, since it is consistent with the comp plan, that the motions state that this approval is for the zone change only, the accompanying concept plan is not approved as out of compliance with our ordinance.
So that's, whoever makes the motion, that, they would add that in?
Yes, that would be my suggestion, because otherwise it may be part of the packet, and who knows what somebody else might see?
Right.
This way, where it's actually approved, it says very clearly, but not that.
And not the concept plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and include in there because it is not in compliance with the ordinance.
Sounds good. Thank you for reeling me back in.
So does that need to be condition number seven?
I'd just make it part of the motion.
Okay.
Now, for that matter, it, but that's not a bad idea either. She can make it part of the, you know, condition number seven also, but I would definitely include that as part of the motion.
Whatever you would like, Mr. Mifflin. You want to add that as seven? I mean, I think that's a good idea. Joe, would you add that as condition number seven? That's the maximum required?
I'll just write it in, Joe.
Okay.
Just simply that the concept plan submitted is not approved as being in violation of the ordinance.
As it's out of compliance. So we'll have a number seven added to that. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kane? Otherwise, we'll have the applicant come up. Mr. Langford?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm Bruce Langford, and I'm here for the applicant, along with Jonathan Hale and Brent Combs from Thoroughbred. Joe gave a good, detailed report, they always do. We understand what he's talking about with respect to the concept plan, and that's okay too. The engineers, Jonathan and Brent, can address that with the planning staff, if you like, at a later date. We'd like to get the zone change approved, because we've done a lot to get here to that point. We've had to give notices and file applications, there's quite a bit to it. So we'd like to go ahead and ask you to approve the zone change, and then we'll address the concept plan if that's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Any questions for Mr. Langford by the commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak, either in behalf or against, please step up to the lectern, as they call it?
Hi, my name is Theda Vinegar, and I'm at 179 Santa Barbara Boulevard, which is East Main Estates subdivision. That was the first one out there, but out there now for 12 years. So I've seen the whole change, the whole, I was there by myself for three years, loved it, because I'm a country girl. But what I'm seeing, and I mean, I'm against the change as far as apartments being brought in out there, in the, in our area. I've seen our last, I'm on the Homeowners Association there at East Main Estate. I have seen where we had finished up our last two plots there, all the houses are built now, but I've also seen a lot of changes with the stop signs, and also with the new extended road. I'm sorry, I didn't get here to that first minute about the extended road. What I am seeing, there is a lot of traffic. There is more traffic, and individuals are not stopping, and I think that needs to be monitored out there. You still have those trucks running fast through there, not coming to complete stop from the rock quarry. So I am concerned about my property value, as well as bringing, when you bring in apartments, and what level apartments those are going to be. Like I says, I've, I've been there now for 12 years. I don't mind bringing other homes in, into that area, but I am totally against bringing in apartments into that subdivision, because there is not a lot of, right now, there's still a lot of traffic trying to exit out by the school area, but you know, I'm on Santa Barbara, you have to exit out going to across the court to get onto East Main Extended. The school exit entrance is straight across from East Main Estates. It runs straight across. So yeah, they have widened the road down at the other end, exit out onto the bypass. There's still a lot of traffic coming, a lot of people still running through there, and there's traffic that even when you try to go out the other end of the subdivision through Mansion Estates onto Lemons Mill Road, there's still a lot of traffic. So I'm, I'm concerned about the influx of traffic that's going to come, you know, with that as well. So those are kind of like my concerns right now, and while I'm against, as been on the Homeowners Association, also in the first resident out there, because I have seen the whole development process, so I can speak to that.
Any questions for Mrs. Vinegar?
Joe, did you tell me that East Main Estates, was it also zoned R2?
Yes.
So I think, I think maybe even the development you live in was zoned R2, and it's possible this could still be developed as single-family homes.
Well, the like for that to happen and not to be apartments, that's my concern.
And that, that would be when they come back with a preliminary development plan?
For sure.
Okay.
This is just a zone change approval, so if it does get approved tonight, they'll still have to come back with us, because the concept plan today is 12, in 16-unit apartment buildings, that's way larger than we'll approve. It's a max of six. Thank you.
Ms. Vinegar?
Yes.
I can't get in my mind, what stop sign are you talking about that the gravel trucks don't stop?
Well, it's, main entrance is right across, you got your four-way stop signs.
On the bypass?
On the bypass.
Okay.
And, and I think what would help is that people are still not used to those stop signs being there, and if they could put lights around those stop signs, kind of like flash?
They're very small.
Yeah, get your attention, because people are still running through there, you know, and not stopping or not coming to a complete stop because they're not used to that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in favor or against this application? Please come up to the lectern, and again, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Janet Williams, and I'm over in, in Ridgefield subdivision. And I just wanted to ask, what would be the largest unit you would approve, other than single-family homes?
Based on the current regulations, the maximum, it would be a six-unit apartment building is the maximum, correct? Or it could be single-family homes, that hasn't been decided.
Okay.
But based on?
Basically, I wanted to know what would be the largest unit you would allow?
Yes, six.
Six.
Six is large.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, anybody else would like to speak? Thank you. Any other questions by, or comments by the commissioners?
If this is going to be turned to R2, the size of the buildings really has no value of what we're talking about here tonight, does it?
No, it's only for the zone change.
Yeah, it's got to come later.
It has to come later, correct? So this is really strictly the zone change.
The zone change.
I'm entertaining a motion.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
I'll make it then, I'll make the motion that we approve ZMA 2019-36, the Drake Zone Change.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Smith?
With the seven...
Number seven added?
Seven conditions of, of approval.
Mr. Caldwell beat you this time. We have a second by Mr. Caldwell. Being that it is a zone change, we'll take a roll call, and we'll start with Mrs. Mizell.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
And the chair says yes. Thank you. Mr. Langford, if you'd like to step up and sign? Next on the agenda is PDP-2019-37, Georgetown Internal Medicine, preliminary development plan to construct a 45,000-square-foot medical office building located at 1100 Lexington Road and 140 Mount Vernon Drive.
Like you said, this is a preliminary development plan to construct a 45,000-square-foot medical office building at 1100 Lexington Road and 140 Mount Vernon Drive. It is zone B2 highway commercial. It was recently rezoned to B2 in late 2017, early 2018. All the surrounding properties are also zoned B2 highway commercial. All right, so this is the site that we're looking at. This is kind of difficult to see with the pink, but the pink is the B2, so it's right here, and then this is the 140 Mount Vernon Drive. So you've got the Sonic here, and the Taco Bell and Advanced Auto Parts down here. This is also an aerial view that might give you a better kind of view, Lexington Road here, Mount Vernon Drive here, and then this is Big Rim Path with the Taco Bell and the Sonic. This is just an aerial view of, of a mock-up that the applicant did, just to give you an idea of what they're looking to do. So this would be where the proposed building would go. They are proposing a four-story with a 12,000, approximately 12,000 square-foot actual footprint, which does meet our requirements. And then in the back here, this 140 Mount Vernon Drive, they are proposing to essentially do an overflow parking lot. They also are proposing to do this access here to where the, the hospital is. So this would allow traffic to exit out through Big Rim Path and go on Mount Vernon Drive, or, you know, go over here to where the hospital is in the light, or they are proposing a direct, well, there's an existing access, but they would be redoing that entrance and would need approval from KYTC to, to do this entrance here onto Lexington Road. So this is the, the plan that they had submitted. I think I should probably start with, they, they do meet our requirement to have to submit a traffic impact study based on the number of peak trips that they would be generating for this use. for this use. They did not submit a traffic impact study, they are asking for a waiver to get, you know, preliminary approval and submit the traffic study with the final development plan. So that's something that, that the commission would have to grant a waiver for if they want to allow it, allow it for the final development plan. But essentially to go over the plan again, here's the proposed building, again, four stories. They would be meeting our parking requirements with the amount of spaces that they're proposing, they'd actually seed it. They would be required to have 130 spaces, I believe they're proposing 191. One thing that staff would ask that was not shown on the plan is that they provide a pedestrian connection if possible to the side, the existing sidewalk on Lexington Road. There is some topographical challenges there, but our regs do require a pedestrian connection for that. I'm just going to page down to a slightly more zoomed in view of this. As far as the other variance or waiver that they asked for was for the interior VUA landscaping requirements. I think the applicant may have indicated that they'd be willing to meet our requirements, but the plan isn't showing it. They would need to include some additional landscaping islands within this back overflow parking lot that they're proposing at 140 Mount Vernon Drive. Some other concerns that staff have with the plan was these eight parking spaces here that they're proposing that would have direct access and pull-off onto Vicarum Path. We, we just feel that that would be a safety concern if Vicarum Path were to ever get more heavily utilized from, you know, the, the properties that, across the street there. And also these two spots here, and they're also showing a VUA island at the end of Vicarum Path. We would ask all those to be removed at the time of final development plan. The two parking spaces, we just feel are too close to intersection there and could pose a safety concern. And then the final thing is that they, they did put a note on here to potentially close and gate Vicarum Path from the Taco Bell here and the Advanced Auto Parts. This is not something that could be approved with the preliminary development plan, this is a private drive, a private access easement. So that's something that would have to get signed off from all the, all the owners that have frontage along Vicarum Path, and it's also something that, that staff doesn't support. I'll go over it with my conditions, but we did ask that if at any point in time they did feel that they were going to gate that off and they did have the necessary discussions with the adjoining property owners, that does get back, brought back before the planning commission to maybe have further discussion about what impact that could have on traffic flow. And I believe that, that was all my comments on the plan, so I can go over just my, my recommendation is still that we continue the application until we receive the traffic impact study. This is just something that helps staff understand what impact that this development and this use could have on the, on the traffic and whether there needs to be changes or improvements to the site. And they can be addressed at the time of preliminary development plan. If not, it, if, we would ask that there be a condition placed that, they do submit the traffic study for, prior to final development plan, that the final development plan is brought back to the planning commission board if, if you guys do choose to approve. And that any improvements that, that are, you know, shown on the traffic impact study are addressed and shown on the final development plan. And just a few other conditions I placed on it that, that aren't what we typically see, which is that pedestrian connection to the sidewalk on Lexington Road, that the applicant does return to the planning commission if they look, or seeking approval for the gate on Vicarum Path. That those A proposed parking spaces that we discussed along Vicarum Path are removed on the final development plan, along with those two spaces by the intersection. And then again, that, that the traffic impact study is submitted to us and that the final development plan comes back before, before you all. So, not sure if you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Michaela?
I had one fairly simple question. Is there any bicycle parking anywhere in this parking lot? I know we've, we've required it next door to Taco Bell.
Yep. They didn't indicate it on the plan, I'm not sure if that's part of their intent. I would love to see it.
Maybe some doctors or somebody want to, want to ride to work.
I don't...
On top of that, maybe some, some patients might want to...
We'll bring you up here right now, actually. The applicant want to step up and talk about it, we'll entertain you.
You guys are all about health, we better, we better provide some bicycle parking.
Good evening, I'm Steve Garland with Integrated Engineering. With me is Tom Cheek, architect. Bicycle, that's a great idea. We got plenty of room to do it, so...
Charlie would ride you there probably.
Maybe.
Staff did a good report, we had a good workshop, so a couple items we're here to talk about. The easement connection of Georgetown Hospital, that's being worked on. The parking spaces on Vicarum Path, the gate spaces, we have no issues about losing those, we have plenty of parking. Same with the, the tube that was by the entrance, we can lose those, that's, and the, the landscape, the interior, it was kind of funny, she almost hit the same five spaces that I marked on my plan during workshop. Oh, I'll just make those landscape islands. We can add landscape islands, lose five more parking places.
And the sidewalk connection on the front, I think, was the last one.
The sidewalk connection, that was my next one. We've looked at the grades, it would be either a very, well, it'd be a, a long sidewalk going the wrong, you would be walking up the public walk and then you'd have to walk back to get up the grade to get into the site because that site's eight feet in elevation. So, or we put steps in. Steps with rails, nice looking set of stairs. So the pedestrian connection, we don't mind making it, but...
So the sidewalk would be lower, but you'd have two or three steps to get kind of up the hill to the parking lot?
Exactly. And we'd lose a parking space in the parking lot to give a, a place that you could come out safely and then walk across with the crosswalk to the building.
I know, I've been on here five years and I know Mr. Smith is always asking about sidewalks, so I'd like the sidewalk. I think stairs, what do you think about stairs? Pretty good idea, Ms. Michaela?
It's just hard because it's not ADA compliant, but...
Sure, I'm looking at how we...
But if it's a hill, I mean...
I mean, you do without stairs and then it's not ADA compliant, but then they can't walk up...
Wheelchair can't go up a, well, it can't go up grass and can't go up a incline anyway, so...
But if you make it double, if you make it double back, you say you can make it, would it be, have it be ADA compliant or not be too, too much of a grade?
Oh, to do a double double?
Aesthetically, I think that'd look terrible.
It would.
Yeah.
But then the, the process may reveal a solution. Once we get out there, it may, you know, we may be able...
If stairs aren't ADA compliant, maybe we could just do the sidewalk without any stairs. You'll have grass, but there would be no way for somebody who would be in a wheelchair walking to be able to access your parking lot, but if, if we have to be ADA compliant, Mr. Perkins, do we need to be ADA compliant when we put a sidewalk in?
Well, if there are places where you cannot be compliant and that sort of thing, but ordinarily, yes, sir, we're, we're supposed to be ADA compliant.
But you can access through Mount Vernon in the back of the parking lot.
Right, so the connectivity would be just for people walking up and down the street, not necessarily to their building.
Yeah.
That, that'd be...
Right.
That's what the sidewalk is for.
Better solution for...
The connection would be a pedestrian connection to neighbors on either side if you want to go to Sonic or...
Well, I, I think I like what Mrs. Mizell's saying, the steps are good, but they will not be compliant for ADA purposes, although somebody who's in a wheelchair or needs to access it, won't be able to access it by foot except for up the stairs.
They'd go around back.
Right, they'd have to go around back if they had a wheelchair or things like that.
And once we get further into the construction drawings, if the solution of, oh, look, we did this...
Able to grade it a little differently.
Do it, it's...
Because maybe once you start moving dirt around there, you may go, move a little more dirt and make the slopes a little less steep. All right.
Our, our requirement does not say ADA compliant, it just says a pedestrian connection.
Pedestrian connection.
So stairs would be great. I think stairs would look nice versus a double or triple. That'd be a nightmare.
And like we said in the workshop, considering the traffic study, there was maybe a little misunderstanding, miscommunication. When the traffic study came up, it's a state road, I contacted Robert Baker, the head of permitting with KYTC. I submitted the email at the workshop and the state did require a traffic study. And so when I got his email, I forwarded it onto staff and I didn't realize there was another requirement. You know, I got an email from the state saying, no, we don't want a traffic study. And I went, oh, okay. So that's why we're asking a waiver, we don't mind doing one.
I think what we talked about...
Whatever the state was backing, tells us to do, we'll have to do.
I think what we talked about at workshop is if we approve you tonight to get the approval going, we just require to get this traffic studying and we'd have them come back for the final, correct? Any other questions for the applicant?
Oh, the last concern I think was the note down there closing the gate. We recognize that at this time, the, the legal hurdles are complicated.
And you can bring that back with your final.
I mean, that's... That brings me to one other question. Is it, is it definite that Georgetown Community Hospital will allow this connection? I mean, are they, I know the doctors all want it, is, are they on board with...
Yes.
Making this connection and...
Yes.
Basically a four-way stop, I guess there wouldn't be...
They are.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll open it up to anybody else who'd like to speak. Anybody else here in favor or against? Stand up and come to the lectern and Mr. Perkins will swear you in.
If he's not in uniform, we've got to swear him in. Do you swear a firm statement you're about to make to be the truth, as best your information believes?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name's Ronnie Waggoner. I live in Cambridge subdivision. My wife's, my dad is on that property for 60 years. I haven't met the buyers, I haven't met the engineers, but, you know, we've been approached by a number of people with reference to what they'd like to put there on that piece of property, 1100 Lexington Road. Carlene always wanted to have somebody build something there that's going to mean something instead of a fast food restaurant or a car wash or whatever. I think this is, you know, in context with the hospital, I think this is a great idea.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Dr. Birdwhistle, you got anything to say?
I think they've got...
All right, well then I'd like to entertain a motion.
Hi, my commission...
So Mrs. Mizell makes motion to approve?
I'm sorry, I just have to make a quick comment on that. When it, I did vote waivers for the traffic impact study in the interior VUA islands. So if you want to see the interior VUA islands added into that parking area in the back of Mount Vernon Drive, you'd want to not...
So we would probably move it from waivers to add it as a, an additional condition?
Yeah, you could, you could make it a condition.
So maybe condition number nine, because they've agreed to the islands, correct?
Yeah, I believe they have, I just left it in there because of the...
So probably strike the...
Number one variance.
Number one variance, because they said they will comply to all the landscape variances. So we'll strike number one waiver.
And number two would remain, correct?
Yes, number two would remain and do we, well, we don't need to add it on as a condition then because they said they'll, they'll comply. Correct, so just strike. So your motion still is to approve striking waiver number one, which is the landscape because they've agreed...
I think I just understood waiver number one. If they don't get the waiver to 95 feet, then they've got to put the... I just realized, that's what that means. Okay. Yeah, I'll strike that.
All right, thanks, Mr. Perkins.
Condition that it returns to the top of the...
Is that not in here?
That's, that's on there.
It's on there.
That's number 11.
It wasn't in the staff report, I added that.
Yeah, that's number 11.
It's up here.
Yes.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Mizell, I need, and we have a Mr., you know, I was going to say, I heard you, Jeff, and we have a second by Mr. Caldwell. We can do an all in favor, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, so it passes. So that is, come up and sign the forms for...
Subject to...
With Charlie, sign your forms. Yep.
Yes.
And then it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's the last thing on the agenda, unless you want to update a previously approved projects and agendas. Hold on, then I can use this thing, so I'll make the motion, we adjourn.
Just bring it down.
Look at that.